If we don't know whether Kim is coming or not, let's go ahead and get started and she can, she can always join. We don't have to call the order because it's a work session. So I will just immediately turn the floor over to Dr. Vianney.
Thank you. And I think my microphone is on because the green light is on. Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, so tonight's sole agenda is to present the board with a draft budget for next year. Uh, and to have discussion, answer questions, um, see what additional information you would like. Uh, before I turn it over to the finance group, the detail person, which would be Kent. Um, context always matters. So I, I volunteered to give the context. And so we began the administration, the vice presidents with four budget goals in mind. Uh, the first was to use data to inform our work. The second was to preserve but Butler's reputation regarding the quality and impact of our programs and services. Third, of course, a given was to garner the board's support for the FY, when FY twenty six budget. And then last, but certainly important, to attract a rich pool of presidential applicants. Because when you get to the semifinalist and finalist stages, they're going to want to review the proposed budget as well as previous past budget. So given that, with that in mind, with that context, I want to give a shout out to the administrative team. Uh, they have done yeoman's work in, um, laying the groundwork to, for a foundation to get us to a sustainable model. And I know that's the goal of the board. Uh, but you've got to have the foundation first before you can think long-term about a sustainable model. And then I mentioned this earlier as one of the goals, but I think it's crucial to position the college and the budget for next year with the incoming new president in mind. So he or she has that ability to begin to work on the sustainable model and advance it. Um, Kent's going to review the FY twenty six budget assumptions with you, answer any questions you have. I do want to point out, because I know it's a board goal relative to unencumbered cash, that the draft budget you're going to see does achieve and in fact exceed the ten point five percent of expenditures goal, run spent budget. Um, I think the most noteworthy assumption at, I don't know that noteworthy is quite the right word. The most unclear assumption right now is relative to the state operating grant. We already know that we will receive a four hundred sixty six thousand dollar decrease for tiered and non-tiered and CT funding, because it is based on a three-year rolling average of enrollment. And while we are celebratory about this year's enrollment with spring looking equally strong as to fall in terms of an increase, it doesn't offset the two previous years of decrease. So we are expecting that decrease. Um, beyond that, uh, her Heather Morgan, executive director of KACC and lobbyist extraordinaire. At this moment in time, she is telling us the best we can hope for in terms of state aid is a flat budget, which translates into the fact that we, we have not built a draft budget for presentation and discussion. That includes student success funds that we received this year, cybersecurity funds that we received this year, BNI funds that we received this year. Um, Kent remains hopeful, as do I, uh, that our capital outlay revenue will remain intact. But again, that is quite uncertain. The legislature is scheduled for a ninety day session. Clock began tacking and clock, clock began ticking, began ticking in January. Theoretically, the session would end in March, but it's, I use the word murky. There may be a better word, but un-state funding is quite uncertain at this point. And so our recommendations regarding a draft budget to present to the board may change based on what we learn weekly from Heather and discussions in the Capitol. I am compelled, compelled as a third-party observer, someone coming in with fresh eyes to share some observations with you regarding the budget for next year. And I believe it is essential if, if, if we want to preserve the quality of our programs and services, depth and breadth for the coming year. We have to build a budget that is reasonable in order to do that. And so the budget that we are presenting to you, which admittedly has some additions, is not one of flood from my perspective. In fact, I see it to be lean. But I see it as having the ability to sustain the essence of Butler. Kent calls it the identity. I call it the reputation we have come to be known for, uh, locally, statewide, regionally, and nationally. So uh, we, the administration, have made every effort to do the delicate dance between being sensitive to local taxpayers, major source of revenue, students, another major source of revenue. And what we need, again, to preserve the essence of Butler that we all have come to know and embrace. Um, it, you will see the increases in the model that Ken is going to show you, but recognize, we are asking for increases. The administration has set a targeted goal of reducing expenditures by five hundred thousand. Uh, we're doing that as good faith effort to show you the board, we understand uh, everything that is in play here. And if we're going to ask you for increases, it is only fair, on the other hand, that we identify where some cuts can be made. So we look forward to meaningful dialogue with you. We entertain any questions that you want to bring forward. If we don't have the answers tonight, we'll get them for you as soon as possible. And that said, I think I will pass the baton to Kent. And he will walk you through the handout that he has prepared based on the vice president's discussion and work today.
No, thank you. You know, Jerry and Nadine, Jessica. I'm gonna go ahead and share, uh, my screen. It has the PDF, the handout that we've given you. And, uh, I'll try to flip through the pages in the order that we talked to him about. So on page one, um, system information about our local taxes, mill levies, valuation, actual taxes levied. Um, you've seen, uh, iteration of this type of information before. Uh, just spoiler alert, I think, you know, why are we starting to talk about this the first thing? Well, uh, we are going to be proposing later on a one-mill increase. So we think it's helpful to take a look back to see, you know, what's been the trend on our mill levy. I know that we have, um, trustees who felt like we should have been maybe using more of the valuation increase as we went along, uh, rather than, um, before we hit, um, hit a space where we might ultimately, uh, be in some peril. So in twenty nineteen, or just the general fund, our mill levy was right at eighteen. We also, at that time, had a two-mill capital outlay, um, levy, and I haven't included that in this comparison. So that line one, you see the valuation has increased from seven hundred and forty-five million roughly to one billion eighty-eight, uh, uh, million. Um, and our levy was decreased from eighteen down to a low point in twenty-four of little over twelve. We did ask and the board approved a one-mill increase, uh, for twenty twenty-five. Get it back up a little over thirteen mils. Um, on line three, what this shows is what, what the, um, the actual taxes levied has been over this period of time. So line three, there, those are actual taxes levied. Line four is a calculation. If we had left a mill at eighteen point zero six eight, not changed it at all for this, uh, five, six-year period from twenty nineteen through twenty twenty-five. Um, that shows what the amount of taxes levied would have been uh, over that period of time at eighteen mils. And then the line five there shows the difference each year between what we actually levied and what we would have levied if we had, um, taken advantage of the valuation increase. And you can see that the cumulative total over that period of time is almost, um, twenty million dollars. Um, in the second section there, I thought it was important to say, well, what's happened to our state aid? While our, um, you know, um, melody went down and our actual taxes went down up until twenty twenty-five. Our state aid did take some, a nice increase in twenty twenty-two, and then it sort of maintained that for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, no, I guess it was twenty-three was the increase. And then for the subsequent two years, it's held pretty steady. Um, but when you compare how much the state aid went up compared to how much we would have received in local taxes, if we'd maintained a mill levy, we still come up about four million dollars on the negative side of that. Another thing that I think is important to realize or think about is, you know, what's, what's happened with inflation over this period of time? And this lower section is an attempt to kind of look at that. Um, the top line of that section, line nine, is the amount that we, um, actually received in state aid and local taxes, uh, over the past six years. And the line eleven there is what would be the amount if the local and the state, uh, revenues for the college had kept up with inflation. And you can see that, uh, we would have been at thirty-six million dollars in twenty twenty-five instead of thirty-three. And the cumulative total there, um, shows we're about nine million dollars short of keeping up with inflation. So, you know, sometimes it's easy to say, well, we just need to maintain our revenues, but our, uh, our expenditures are going to go up. Uh, and inflation is probably one of the best, um, measures of that. So I think it's important that we keep that in mind as we think about where we're heading in the future, where we've come from. Uh, some of these, um, reflections back over the past five years. So I'll go ahead and go on to the next, um, page. Actually, page two is just a a slide that shows where I got the inflation numbers. I'm not going to delve into that at all. Uh, I want to move on to the page three, and I'll go ahead and, um, put that up on the screen. And it's not very big up on the screen. It's a little better. So uh, we're going to be showing you a three-year budget model, uh, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven. And we want to walk through, uh, some of the assumptions that we made. Obviously, even at this point in time for the twenty-six, Y E twenty-six, uh, budget, which you will be asked to approve in September. Are we, uh, just talking a little bit about the timeline on that. The first major decision is in June, when the revenue neutral rate would need to be considered for a board vote.
Um, I would add, you will be asked to approve tuition and fees for next year in March.
Right. So, um, just walking down through these, uh, assumptions on the tuition and fee increase, we are recommending at this time a four-dollar increase across, across the board. So uh, in district, in state, outstate, international, we're recommending a four-dollar increase in each one of those categories. Um, that will, uh, for our model, cause a decrease in credit hours. And this is based on the assumption that increasing the, um, tuition and fee rate will automatically cause a decrease in, uh, enrollment, given all other factors being held constant. So we haven't gone through and said, okay, we, we think we could increase the enrollment for next year because of demographics or anything else. We just said, okay, we would, uh, at this point in time, say that we think it would probably hold steady with the current year, but by raising the rates, um, in our modeling, uh, we automatically build in a decrease. And this goes back to research that Esam did when he was here on the, uh, what's called the sensitivity of demand or the elasticity factor. We sometimes we refer to it when we talk to you about it. So.
If I could add one more piece of information and conversation among the community college presidents and Heather Morgan. Um, she has cautioned us against setting tuition too early because the state aid picture is murky. Uh, my sense is that the majority of community colleges will increase tuition. Uh, I don't see how they can not. Uh, and that could affect the elasticity factor. But as the administration has talked about it, we think we should not wait until after March to set our tuition and fees for next year. Students need to know. So we will begin that discussion regarding a finalized recommendation for you before your March board meeting. Unless something goes south, we anticipate asking you to approve tuition and fees for next year at your March board meeting.
All right. We'll get into more of the detail of that at the February work session. We're anticipating a work session in February. That's when we, uh, plan to bring you the detailed information on tuition and fee increase. As far as uh, right now, just for twenty-six, Y E twenty-six, um, we'll, we'll come back to that when we actually look at the, the, um, model here. Um, on state aid, Jackie alluded to this. We've been, uh, notified by Heather Morgan, our representative, um, K A C C T representative, to anticipate a minimum of a four hundred and sixty-six thousand dollar decrease in our state aid, uh, based on the Kabor funding formula. Uh, that's actually equates to about a two-point-four percent decrease in state aid, and that's for our tiered and non-tiered, um, funding. We're not real sure about the SP one fifty-five or XLCT at this point. Um, it's my understanding that four sixty-six is strictly from tiered and non-tiered. And again, these are moving targets and we'll get more information, you know, we rely heavily on Heather, but we also have to interpret what she tells us sometimes. Um, so on the, um, non-operating state aid, and this is like we've been receiving the apprenticeship funds, the capital outlay, deferred maintenance fund, cybersecurity funds, um, these are, have been accounted for over in the designated funds portion of our budget. So it's not really part of the, the operating budget that we speak of in this model. But it has allowed us to maintain some, um, overall general fund, uh, unencumbered cash, along with the sixteen million dollars we received five years ago from COVID. But it appears that we're not going to get this, these state monies for next year, and the COVID money is dwindling pretty fast. So, uh, it's not, not a very positive, uh, picture of, um, unencumbered cash outside of the, uh, operating budget. I will, um, either at, probably at the next work session, do want to bring, um, presentation to you that shows you all of these designated funds. We didn't get that put together for this, uh, budget and or for this presentation. And there's a lot to digest and talk about, hopefully, just with the information that we're going to present to you. So there is more information that, uh, needs to come. On the local taxes, we are estimating a five percent valuation increase for twenty twenty-six and another five percent, uh, valuation increase for twenty seven, twenty-seven. And we are recommending a one-mill increase for FY twenty twenty-six. And we can talk more about that, um, as we move along. Uh, transfers. For the current year, we transferred a million dollars from the deferred maintenance designated fund into the general fund. It was meant to be a one-time, um, infusion to the general fund to keep the unencumbered cash up above, uh, the line, um, keep it fairly steady. Uh, given the, uh, variables that we see and the expenditure budget that we're currently recommending, we believe we need to do that for a second year. There is, there are funds available in the strategic initiative, um, designated fund or and or the campus life funds, where we believe it would be a good idea to infuse another one-time million dollars into the, um, operating funds. And again, I, I, this is my personal view of this, I guess, but I, I'd like to maybe reinforce something Jackie said. I, I view this very much as getting through the next budget year, getting it approved and when we have a full-time president that, um, has at least a fairly reasonable budget to work from. I anticipate that there are going to be future budget cuts that are going to be, need to be made in as this president, he or she, I keep referring to the new president as he, he or she is going to have to deal with. And so I think we need to try to keep the operating budget as reasonable as possible, uh, until the new president has a chance to fully understand our budget and start working with the administration and the board on where we go from here. Employee compensation. We have built in a three percent increase raises for faculty and staff for twenty-six and a three percent uh, raise in twenty-seven. Uh, there's a one-half percent provision for equity for staff equity. We've been through that, uh, a lot. I think you trustees understand what we're talking about there. So I'm not going to dwell on it. Uh, we've increased the, uh, estimated amount needed in the twenty-six bus budget for health insurance by three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is approximately six-point-three percent increase. That's pretty low. If you look at the trend of where health insurance has been over time, but we feel like our self-funded um, insurance has been a benefit and, um, Shelley feels that this will be adequate at this time. That could change as we move through the next several months, but right now we believe that's an adequate amount, six and a half, six-point-three percent. We have built in a ten percent increase for the twenty-seven year, which is probably closer to the, what's happening in the market, uh, at least ten percent annually. No, this is the amount that of the contribution that the college makes. It's all the same. It's, um, due to self-funded, but, uh, Right. And we can bring you back more detail, but I think what we're looking at, Shelley, you can help me, is maintaining that ratio approximately for next year. I think that's part of the calculation that we looked at for this.
That's correct. We're also looking at other savings matter, man, uh, ways to save on our plan. Um, one of those considering is unbundling our plan from Blue Cross Blue Shield so that we can go out and market our stop loss ourselves and those type of things. So we are looking at those, um, to identify more savings um, for us over years and more sustainable. So this amount really is, is what I would consider pretty conservative based on what those increases could be. Uh, if, you know, our stop loss insurance goes up more than we anticipated and things like that. So, um, but this would be the amount that the college would add to the, to the premium value. And then there may be another amount that the employees will add to it if it happens to go over that three fifty that we're going to. Yes. Correct. Yes, correct. Mm-hmm.
Good. Thank you for that question. Um, as far as non-compensation expenditures or other additional needs, um, we are, um, recommending uh, eight hundred and thirty-six, almost eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand. And well, these are shown and listed on page five. We'll get back there, but the compensation, um, of course, is a big addition. It's, uh, somewhat over one-point-five million dollars. So, um, these are things we're, we're, um, recommending be added to the budget. We are looking at, uh, item number seven here. Cutting or reducing the existing budget by half a million dollars. So that would help net out against this eight hundred and thirty-six thousand that we're asking for the increase. Um, and right now, uh, the major items that we're looking at is unfilled positions, either current unfilled positions or anticipated unfilled positions.
They're not cutting positions, it's not filling. I cut because you're not spending.
They're cuts through attrition. They're cuts through attrition. Okay, another thing on um item A here. This is again sort of a one-time help for the current budget year, 2025. And then it um, we think we can do a one-time budget reduction in some of the um um student services areas that would qualify for um the student success state funds to be spent on those items this year. Um, it's a one-time uh help to the budget, really just a boost uh to the unencumbered cash. Because next year, this resource would not be, we don't think it'll be available because we don't think the state is going to fund those uh the success fund. Uh, the last item, it's a key item, is we're anticipating an unspent expenditure budget of about 4%. So we have $50 million roughly budget. So that's like $2 million um of unspent budget. But historically, over the past few years, that's what it's been. A lot of it is because during the year, we have unfilled positions. And there are just various other budgets that get unspent during the year. It does net out against some budgets which are overspent, but the net has has been close to this 4%. So we're anticipating that will happen again for the next two years. We need, we have to monitor it. Um, I know I asked Carrie uh late in usually around not April and May to start really looking at that unspent budget to see if we are going to actually hit that goal for the current year. But um, right now, it seems reasonable.
Um, Kent, before you move on to agenda, item number four, it's always important to be accurate in terminology. And so when I was giving you the context earlier, I referenced hitting the target of 10.5% for unspent budget. Wrong terminology.
Yeah.
I said unencumbered with 10.5%, not factual. It is, it it is unencumbered cash and the target is 10.5%. It is not the unspent budget, 10.5%.
Right, if you flip over.
Clarification and I apologize.
You flip over to page four then. These are um two ways of looking at uh the three-year budget. The first is a graphical presentation and then there's a table presentation below that. The um, the 10 and a half percent is 10 and a half percent of the expenditure budget. So we have a um expenditure budget. Let me get down here. For the current year of actually $58 million. Um, so the unspent uh 4% is budgeted at around $2.6 million. The 10% of budget goal, now it passed it here, is um on line 22, little over $3 million. Uh, no. Um, no, excuse me, line 21, the 6.1 um million dollars. But the estimated unencumbered cash at the end of the year in the operating budget is 9.2 million. So we're, you know, that if we meet our projections, we'll get almost 16% for at the end of this year and uh $3 million over. The concern is the trend after that. You can see that that ending balance, based on all these assumptions that we put together here uh on line 20 here, goes to 13.5 next year and then 9.1 the year after that. That's the concern and that's what uh we um really have are thinking about when we say we want to try to protect the upper operating budget and are making a case for additional local revenues to help maintain that. Um. So I think we can come back to this rather than get into the detail. And what last page here, just want to go over and then um I'd like to stop topping for a while and and let the US board members start to mull this over. Um, you can see the additional needs that we're asking for here on page five. The, as I mentioned, the the bulk of it, almost 1.6 million dollars is in compensation. We have um items that we have uh labeled as must pays uh on lines six through 14. These are pretty much items that we have um, you know, because of contractual such situations or um like we have the Yorktown Road that we have made a agreed that we're going to um provide that support for that um uh property insurance. We're putting in a provision here for $60,000. Now that's an estimate at this time, but whatever it comes in, we're not going to have much choice. Um, you know, in the consortium we're in, um, saved us a lot of money last year, but we're pretty much in it. And you know, what they come up with, I mean, February is probably what we're going to have to live with. Um, we've determined that's that's, you know, the best option for us. So again, uh, these are items like the the stadium maintenance and the baseball fee, softball fields. We've made commitments in that regard, so we consider those to be must paid. Um. Well, we had $180,000 need in the budget last year and we reduced that down. So this is, this is what we need to go ahead to maintain the fleet the way it is. Uh, I don't know if we didn't do a good job explaining that or not, but um, that's the amount we need to maintain the current level.
Oh, Kent, did we split it over two years? Is that what yours?
Basically, yeah. Um, and then we have items on line 16 through 21, which we are calling tier one additional needs, which the administration feels strongly that we want to advocate for these items.
Uh, and I would add that is a significantly reduced amount from the needs that were submitted to us in totality. So what the administration did was work through the entire list of needs and categorize them as tier one and tier two and then must pays. And as Kent pointed out, the must pays from our vantage point are not optional to pay. Uh, so you see a very short list of additional needs labeled as tier one.
So we'll, we'll continue to bring you updates to this over the next several months. Uh, but we did want to uh bring you up to speed on where the administration use the current budget process and uh start to hopefully um spur some dialogue among you as trustees so that we as the administration can work with you uh to try to get a budget that's acceptable as we move forward.
President, for us here.
Yes.
Okay, first, what is the estimate uh when you estimate 1 mil support?
Um, it's a, it's a little less than 1.1 million. The valuation is almost 1.1 billion. Then there's some um, you know, uncollected tax. And now we don't, we don't get that 1.1 million all the first year, but generally, that's what it's worth.
So I just wanted to know, first, what's comment just from me? Going back to the tax year, at some point, we funded tech offerings at 75 billion. Who's still here? They indicated we were in fact a significant number of new students in that sector. Can you remember?
Under.
Cybersecurity?
They said we could have as many as 42 new students, we had more.
I remember that.
But I'm assuming it could have been in cybersecurity, but we will get the enrollment data and bring it back.
It was stated. Or it might have been for you guys.
Media.
It was a media, oh, was it CCTV plus?
But I'm not. I'll start beating the dead horse, but that's another important reason. If we have the videos, we can go back to which when Bill was still here and watch exactly what he said and find out.
Uh, well, just that's just president.
I I will say that that was never brought forward by Bill or anybody else to be a realistic um modification to our budget. He never brought that forth in the VP meeting and said, I think we're going to get this much money that we can add to the budget. That did not happen.
Towards that or in any work, I mean, that's.
So Linda, to your question, uh, we will commit to bringing you back enrollment data related to investments in IT. Will that get it some answers for your question? Okay, we're on it.
So overall, um, just thanks that we definitely funded for she and the other enrollment programs. Just my, there in my mind, I said, okay, we've increased enrollment by making a ministry. And now we can bring that in some. Um, and then everyone turned and talked about them. It seems like the groups that are getting added to group ones that are increasing their numbers. So I realized the questions that are asked and so forth, it's not me, but we have staff that can tell us what the performance would be for having tech offerings over a period of time. Because I heard that Dr. Neville had maybe committed to need that we do that to an offering. Are the technicals approved and all these things? We're not talking about, oh, let's add tech and next thing is what we did. It's almost like a free semester down the river before you actually have seen. So I guess my challenge would be to understand what do we have in the hopper for tech offerings? And what's the performer um when and yet that would impact our. Because as I said, I feel like we're having enrollment with administrative one. And so anyway, we do it for tech offering. And then my last thing, much of the uh a downer, but I'm not experiencing anything. And we increased, you know, last year, I have been said that I thought that we needed to uh take the increased assessed valuation all along. But um, I got called this past year, I was willing to support only one. We'll make this last year because we hadn't taken um the increased assessed valuation. And and I guess I don't want to be perceived as a person who's trying to tell staff what to do. It's their jobs, they're the ones who know.
You didn't get any of that. He else is my god.
I can go, but if anybody else wants to go before me.
Um, Shelby, with all due respect, before you go, if I could address Linda's first question, what I hear you saying is asking, what new programs do we have in the hopper? And what's the ROI period? Uh, and I saw.
What we propose to be the hopper.
Well, that's a given. You can't do an ROI unless you know the programs. And I saw Aiden taking notes. So uh, the VPs with the agents able to assistance will work on that and bring you back answers. And then Shelby, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm not really organizing my thoughts. I'm just uh. As of two years ago, our marketing budget, this ballpark, oversimplification, marketing budget is 375,000 dollars a year. We doubled that the previous year. We kept that additional $400,000 last year. Here's your budget this year, keeping that $400,000 at the end. So our marketing budget's now 800,000, remaining 800,000 on the previously 400,000 three years ago. So it's back to 400,000 or we're at 700, change is my question.
I think it was increased by the 400,000 you mentioned.
Two years ago.
There has.
But then we kept it last year.
You kept it, but that doesn't increase it, it just keeps it at that level.
Okay, but you you double it and then you cut off 15%. We're still 85% higher than we were two years ago in marketing with a very small uptick finally after hiring enrollment consultants, I forget what they're called, enrollment coaches for $160,000, 24% of 125,000 credit hours, 24 hours times 300 credit hour at $800,000 plus additional employees. Do we want to look at going back to our original, which was fine two years ago? And throw all out our history of $400,000 for marketing. Butler is a new quantity. I don't think doubling our marketing. I'm just throwing out ideas where we could make some possible cuts.
Uh, and the note I have taken on that is to gather the data regarding our marketing budget.
I'd like to be a line item of that.
Yeah.
There was, I believe, under 400 and it went up to close to 800. Uh. I'll just say it again. I don't think uh we should pay foundation wages of 300 and some thousand. That's an expense over 10 years is $3 million. The foundation, I think, should pay its own way. It's projected to be 338 this year, it was 327 last year, correct? Uh. Uh, I do think at some point, what I'm hearing is, I'm talking to the board, just we're in charge and we take the arrows or whatever. But uh, what I'm hearing is wait two years from now and then we'll look at making some cuts. That's what Kent said up there. We wait till the new president comes in with no cuts, but a tax increase. So they've got the cushion to get their feet underneath them. We could take the heat as a board now and say, hey, cuts have to come. It's our fault now, not the new president not going to be taking heat a year from now from everybody that's screaming about some possible cuts. I mean, we can take it because it doesn't matter to us, we're going to get paid. I mean, it matters to us, but it doesn't really, we're not in the politics of working at a company and somebody that's their fault, you know, you might not get raised. That's an idea. Uh, just on on that, as we're just discussing it.
The message, though, you would be sending to the entire candidate pool is that we are taking a budget that is right now $3 million over what we say is our not, we're, we're $3 million in unencumbered cash above what our baseline says we have to be.
Right.
And I'm doing some very rough math. You take no mil increase at all, that is going to take that down to less than a million dollars over the, over the.
Over the projector.
And what in the world is going to make a prospective candidate think that we aren't going to do the same thing after they get here? And what in the world is going to make a prospective candidate think that we aren't going to do the same thing after they get here?
What do you?
Well, you're, you're saying we take the heat so that, so the new president doesn't have to worry about it. I think what you do there is you send a message to a new president that you're walking into a board that doesn't support investing in the college.
I would take the opposite approach. Are we required to keep ten point five and we're keeping fifteen percent or keeping?
But you can't maintain ten point five next year without.
Not with the projections. And then if you look at the projection, increase of tuition and fees, those aren't even five percent. Predicted increases in, in our income on twenty-six and twenty-seven. So how? How would we run a business and not raise our prices enough to predict at least keep up with inflation on our income?
Well, that's where we trust the people that, that realize that if you raise it by seven percent, which is inflation, you might lose five percent of your students. And are you net positive? And the double, if we lose, if we lose hours but gain money, we might gain some revenue. On the tuition and fees part, but that's going to contribute to losing state aid because that's going to be based on our rolling average of hours, which is then going down. I mean, it's, there's not a one size. I don't think there's a one size fits all answer, but I think. How we handle this is sending a message to people that are looking at whether they want to come work here as to whether we're a board that is. Willing to give flexibility to allow them to work fiscally. Not that we should write a check for whatever anybody asks for. That's not what I'm saying.
My experience here is we just do what we're presented by the administration generally. We've done some other stuff, but a couple of increases, a couple of cuts. But I would like to see a president willing to come in and say, hey. Nationally, we're losing students like crazy. We're not reproducing. We have a lower high school people coming into college. Is college going to be the same twenty years from now? If not, what do we do to make it where we survive to that point? Because AI and is going to change a lot of what college does for people. I mean, they're again, be a lawyer or. An engineer, when you just say, hey, Siri, write me code for this, and then I don't know how to implement it. Hey, blah, blah, implement it. It will be done. Mostly by computer. So it's going to eliminate some, I just want to see somebody that's future thinking. And then knows that we need to do something different than just. I said it years ago, it's rude, but kind of kick the can. We're going to fund everything. We're going to give raises. We're going to hopefully increase a little bit. And still take it from the local taxpayers to balance it. And there were some states. wrote it on the page. Uh, just the state is proposing to lower property tax one point five mils. The state's proposing a three percent mill levy cap. The state is currently. Proposing to step, to cut state agency budget seven and a half percent. I read somewhere else they're proposing their raises here. So the state's kind of buckling down or proposing to buckle down, which will affect us. But. I would like to see some proposed cuts or some consolidations. Our Andover enrollment went down forty-six percent over four years, but I don't see any. There's position of not build, but I don't see our expenses being cut to match our decline in enrollment, and I don't see how it's sustainable. But I've said this for five years. It's just what I think. But another thing to think about, no one will ever do it. But our football loses one point two million a year, one point one. We took educare closed it down. We rolled nine hundred grand in the building and we pay to have a police force now that. Not sure that we could even, we could talk about it if it's necessary to have it at the level we have at. I don't think that changed. I mean, public, I don't, public safety doesn't grow just because we moved to move them into the old educator. At what point did you have Butler Public Safety? It was originally El Dorado Police Force.
I don't think it's been El Dorado Police Force for a number of years.
It's been, it's been a police force since I've been here eight years. It's been a police department.
I think it's been a police force for about thirteen.
Okay.
I'd have to go back and double check, but I think that's about right.
Are you done, Shelby?
I think so for now.
Just for now.
Not completely finished.
I have, I have some questions. What year are we in? For the enrollment formula, what year are we in for that? Rolling average.
So we are in the third year.
The year.
This year is the third year. Whether we can make up and close the gap next year.
Uh huh.
We don't yet know. It depends on what the enrollment increase is for FY twenty-six.
Can we look, I know Shelby, you've preached about this for a number of years. Can we look at what would happen if we did take? The salaries of the endowment and can had them pay them. I, I don't understand. Why it's been such a big deal, but I'd like to see it on paper, what it would do to the budget.
Um, we, we can look at that. I, I can speak to research that we have done internally. About the number of colleges that do provide support.
That's what I'd like to know.
Foundation. We will bring that back.
Okay.
The majority of the colleges do provide some level of support for their foundations. Based on the return on investment. Uh, particularly in terms of scholarship dollars for our students, but we will bring that data back. So you will see. How many of the nineteen colleges invest in their foundations? Uh, whether it's in totality or in some percentage.
Right.
No, there are some offsetting costs because they do things for us that we don't care. So that'll be taken into consideration.
Yeah, I'd like to see all that.
Um, so there are two sets of data. The, the first set is. What number of colleges provide support from their operating budgets for their foundations? And secondly. What does Butler Community College get tangibly for its investment in the foundation? Did I hear that correctly?
Well, I, I think, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I, where, what I heard from Linda was. Uh, Tom is VP of Advancement.
And he is ill or he would be here tonight.
What, what portion of his position would Butler have to create a separate VP of Advancement? To do the things that Butler Community College wants from that position that's independent of what he does for the foundation. Because I don't know that Shelby's suggesting that the foundation pay for something that he's doing for the college. The foundation would pay for what the foundation. Needs itself. Is that right?
Yeah, I'm just throwing this topic.
I know, I just, but I, yeah, but I don't know that saying, saying that we fund three hundred and seventy thousand of the foundation, if that number's right. Doesn't take into account the fact that some of that three hundred and seventy thousand is arguably tasks that the college would have to perform on its own. If the foundation wasn't performing.
So I want to make sure I'm getting the right data sets here. You want to know what tasks are performed by foundation staff? That are really college cats.
Right. I don't even have to know what the tasks are. I'm just saying if we didn't pay salaries, say three hundred thousand dollars. Then in turn.
What would stop?
What would our cost be to fill the? Roles, positions or to contract back for service? Because it's not going to, it's according to what we've been told, it's not going to be. It's just a salary savings. We're going to have a cost reflective on the other side of the.
Mary.
Okay.
I was talking, talking with a gentleman at the K-State Endowment. His kids go there and I think it's a billion dollars. And five people. Delighted. That's just it. It's five people with a billion dollars.
I'd have to argue that point because I know three of those people that run it. I, I'm sure there's more because it's a huge foundation, huge.
Well, and their foundation is split up into two or three different parts. Because they have an athletic foundation, they have a, a academic foundation, they, they have a building foundation. You know, that, that big foundation, it may be, you know, but they. They just got through with a two hundred and fifty million or two hundred and fifty million dollar building project. On the campus and that was only for athletics and that wasn't counting the. The animal science center that they built for two or three billion dollars that part of the government paid for.
Though, I, my question is, she, did it come out of the marketing budget at four hundred thousand?
No, it did. It, it came out of student success funds.
That's right.
Which we believe sadly, regrettably are no longer going to be available next year, but I want to back up to the foundation. Question. It is always important to compare apples and apples. So it, from my perspective. It's not. Accurate. It's not apples and apples to compare a university foundation and a community college foundation. So. Whatever data we bring back to you will be in the community college realm. Uh, with that we had K-State's foundation.
And Butler's endowment is really new. I mean, it's one of the newest foundations out of the eighteen colleges. Or nineteen colleges, excuse me. Uh, Linda, were you going to?
I was just going to say, although it's nice to know whatever you're doing. You know, it's up to us to do what's best for us. And if it's to keep paying the salaries and others down. Or to not pay them, although others do, I mean, it's a nice point of information. But I still think, you know, we're talking about philosophy and hard dollars, two different things, you know. Is, is it? What for us to be paying? I mean, that's in some of the talk and the other is how many dollars are we really?
Mm-hmm. And we will bring back hard dollars. Uh, but I will say this, I, I believe you also need to look at the non-dollar impact. Uh, the ability of the foundation to raise friends who become support, supporters. It's invaluable to our scholarship endeavors. So I think you. You also need to look at trend data regarding the number of supporters we've garnered. And the number of people we have moved from one giving level to the next. So you get the whole picture.
Agreed. That's all my questions. Thank you.
Comments or?
I'm more just taking it in today. I don't. I mean. I, I think it, and I'm going to say this to all of us trustees. It behooves us to speak to our representatives and our senators. And. You know, to, uh, because they control a lot of the money and, and if they're cutting property taxes. And we know that that affects us, then. Uh, we'll have to make a decision on our level. They're just pushing the decision from them to us. And it doesn't hurt to, to remind our senators and representatives and congressmen. Uh, you know, uh, all of the people who represent us at the state level. Uh, uh, to, uh. Work for our good. I know I've challenged.
It's going to be a headache.
No, I understand, but.
With Hopkins in there and no. And the governor here and the president and the chairman of this house, you guys, we have a, it's going to be a battle. If they can get done in ninety days, hallelujah. I don't think they can.
I would like to see us as a board tighten our belts, consolidate where we can. Demand a culture of excellence at every level or feature reviews, all that, so we can get just quality data. And then we start growing, growing, growing after that, then expand back up.
Doctor Bailey, Wednesday, next time that we're going to talk budget. Is that at the February work session or at?
With February work session unless she wants to talk sooner than that. Uh, but we will go.
Basically via emails, great too.
Say that again, Shelby, so I don't.
Information before the meeting, that way it'd be more fair.
Well, and what I was, we're having a mind meld. What I was going to say was, we will go forth and gather the data. For the questions you raised, but if you have other questions. Get them to me as soon as possible so we can give you the fullest picture.
I have one to your, to your question list.
You can, and then I'm going to speak my perspective.
Do you want to finish first?
No.
Okay, you.
I would always defer.
No, we don't do that. If you have, it's. If you ask me, if I had a great thought in my mind and someone else wanted to interject in fifteen seconds, that great thought is long. And it's not coming back. Okay, Kent, you did this last year for the budget. You put together the graph that had some multiple scenarios. I think with a couple of trustees already mentioning the idea of a, of a no mill increase, I think it would be helpful to see. What the, what this unencumbered cash graph would look like with some of those different scenarios.
So you and I are having a mind meld. It's scary. I've had two mind melts, but what I wrote down was. Bring back options to the board that show a one mill levy increase, a half mill levy increase and a zero mill levy increase. So I think that's what I hear you.
Yes, ma'am. And a cut for me. I'm just kidding.
And that's great too, but if we have this model, we also, and as I said, it's not. I would rather that this come from the administration. But we also have the model where we can say, what if we tweak this item here? This one here and this one here, what does it look like? If what it's, it's hard for me without being able to see that working to understand. Cuts and, and potential for cuts and things like that. Because right now we're just saying we're going to take these expenditures and take these nice to haves or whatever, have to haves, nice to haves. Here's where we think we're going to be on the employment side and so forth, but what happens if all of those change? And what happens if the tuition changes? What happens if? You know, like I said, I'm not interested in mill levy increase. I'm not saying I absolutely wouldn't look at it. To some degree, but I want to understand all the other components too, because they have to be able to justify. And other changes have to be able to be made too, to be able to justify if we can. I mean, it's just, it's more than one thing.
And so what I hear you requesting is to have the ability when we meet in February. To be able to create what-if scenarios. Based on major assumptions on the revenue side and the expenditure side. And so I think we need to think through how to get a better display, more readable display of the vibe. Your model can, it's, it's, it's a little hard to see it up there. I don't know if that's possible, but we'll work on it, right? We'll work on it, right?
I think it's.
Okay.
I also think it would be important for our. Staff to understand, we can have an idea. We may not be thinking right. Don't hesitate to challenge us. Don't hesitate to challenge me when I say. Okay, I want to see this text up and whatever. And you go, Linda, you don't even have a clue. You're not, you're not in the ballpark here at all or whatever. Because I don't know. I'm just asking and I'm saying, you're the experts. Help us understand. What we can and can't do. And again, not just for this one year's budget, but let's have a good idea. Of how these things interplay and what would happen for the following years. It should have to be this hard every time.
I had a, I think last year I brought this up. It's like, if, if there were four of us, it'd be better for the administration than now than March and July. Just say, hey, we're not going to raise the mill levy. Period. They would be able to make adjustments on their end without us micromanaging. And, but it would depend on the majority of, Tim and I aren't going to be for it at all. So it come down to the other.
That's unfortunate to hear that because you've not even heard the justification for what it is and you're just categorically saying you wouldn't support it.
No, we've lost. Thirty-seven percent of our students haven't really cut our budget. I'm not willing to raise the taxes on the local.
Then they'll say you want, you want fact-driven decisions because what you're saying is I've made a decision and I don't want the facts.
No, I will not vote to raise taxes, periods.
Yes, you're, you've made a decision. I, I knew that was the decision, but what you're saying is we should just make that decision now tentatively, even though we don't have all the facts.
It would give the administration their budget, their final budget to work with. Plain and clear, simple. This is our budget and then they could make adjustments on their end. It's all I'm trying to say.
Why would you make that decision when there's so many, but there's so many unknowns. Everybody has to deal with the unknowns. Why would we commit ourselves? Four months before we have to.
Because if you have constraint, it gives you freedom to make things work. And if you don't have constraint, you can just. Do everything you'd like to do with the taxpayers thing, pick them up. I would like to ask, we raised taxes one point six million dollars last year. What did we gain for? Linda wanted technology. Is it just simply for raises? That's what it sounds like very much. But. But.
Actually, we had a significant.
Got a what, a five percent increase in enrollment?
In enrollment, and then we had salary, we had insurance, we have property. I think it's just the cost of doing business.
We have utilities.
So we're voting on tuition and fee increase in February?
March.
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 I wrote that down wrong, that's why I was asking.
March. Uh that that barring anything, I'm first, our major sources of revenue, our local property taxes, tuition and fees, and state aid. In my opinion, as your third-party objective observer, we have to I strongly urge the board to have as clear a possible picture on those three sources. Before you make budgetary decisions for next year. If the stars align, we will have as a reasonable sense of our state aid. Based on that picture, we we'll have a reasonable picture of tuition increases. And I say that because hopefully we will at least know what other community colleges are thinking about in terms of tuition and fees next year. And for your discussion tonight, we will, we will create options for you regarding mil levies, zero increase, half a mil levy increase, one mil levy increase. Uh I don't think you want to see one point five root two mil levy increase, so uh we hear that message sent, message received.
Go back to the foundation, I don't think we want you guys wasting hundreds of hours of.
No.
Just ballpark idea.
Uh act on fact, act on fact, we are going to bring you facts.
Okay.
And I'd also like to know, what about if we would go five dollars or six dollars or seven dollars? I know what Esam has said. But is four dollars a good amount to raise tuition?
You, I I think, I I said, Mary Martha, would you like me to say trustee good?
No, no.
I think if we can get a clear picture of what our competitors are doing, and by competitors, and they are to your colleges within close proximity to us.
Like our main competitor, WSU, WSU Tech, so not competing with Johnson County.
No, no, and when I say our competitors, I'm talking regional. And so there are a couple of community colleges that are in close reasonable proximity to us, and certainly WSU Tech. So that's what I'm thinking.
And even WSU itself, honestly, because you could do your four years there or two, two and two. I did, just to say.
If you look at WSU Tech, they charge a lot more money than we do when you get them to.
When you add all the.
You can look at one of their programs that are so many hours, their basic classes cost per hour is far more than ours for the basics, and then, you know, the more technical piece. Yeah, more is even more.
Mm hmm.
So from a standpoint of dollars, from what I've seen and looked at, I didn't see that uh they were any cheaper, they market differently about some things and tell you it's free and it's not.
Their credit hour cost is.
But if you really look at the classes, the cost of those credit hours versus ours, and for these things that we both offer, there are more.
Right.
Uh but as I said, they've got they're getting those students and so.
Yeah, I think.
And they have offerings that we don't have, we won't have.
Well, we're not gonna do aviation, that makes no sense at all. Uh but I think you have to look at the scholarship picture for WSU Tech, and if there's a way to gather that data, we will. Uh are they offering program courses and programs for free? I don't know the answer to that, but I think you gotta look at the full, as full a picture as you can.
If you look at those ads, so you really go out and research a little bit. You know, there's a little bit of fine print.
Well.
Although they said, you know, you you're gonna get this for nothing. We have some of our certificate things that we've been given funds and been able to offset costs and so.
I'm not to let the out of the bag or to convey a lack of transparency on our part to the board, but Aiden has already begun delving into WSU Tech charges and our other competitors' charges, so we'll flesh that out and bring it back to you.
I don't we also in March vote on like residence hall costs, or do we wait?
That that usually comes forward in March too, and again, we'll we'll look at what our competitors are doing, Bill has already formulated some initial recommendations for administrative discussion day.
Yeah.
And I add a couple.
Sure.
Items, this is actually tuition issue, so it's probably the February work session, it wouldn't be before that. You mentioned the um that uh research looked at, they were expecting a point seven percent decrease.
In elasticity.
Yeah, elasticity, is that is that ba, I assume that that point seven percent is based on our entire student population, so in district, in-state, out-of-district, and international. Is it possible to get those numbers for each student population? And what would be the break-even point for each population? If we were looking at a, what what their, what their analysis says would be a uh an increase that would be sustainable with no loss in credit hour number, what would it be? And does it vary by, I'm just curious, does it vary by population? I assume it would, but I'm just curious how much.
Um.
We're always sensitive to how in-state or how in-district students are being treated, so I think that would be helpful. Okay.
Um I would also ask Aiden to bring his voice to the table on that as well. Um and knowing him, he's already on it. And then, did you say you had another?
That was, those were the two things, yeah, just that, two things for for the February work session when we're talking about tuition and fees more in more detail.
I had another comment too, like, we're running this as a business, I know it's not the same, but let's have a worst-case scenario, the state is getting intense with their budget cuts this year, they'll probably do the same the following year, which I mean, election two years from now, at some point, they're gonna start defunding. It's gonna trickle down to us at some point, I don't see how it's gonna still continue to be as large. Maybe put that into our plans of like, how do we get but rolling with fewer state funds, and if they give it to us, that's a bonus, so they're hoping it comes in, wishing it comes in, and then we're kind of on, kind of dancing to the state to give us money instead of just doing our own thing and then taking their support. I would just like to not count on it.
Thanks, everybody. You have your.
Thank you.
You find?
I had an off-topic item.
Okay. This is relevant to our discussion tonight and the FY twenty-sixth budget. Um again, as a third-party observer, I would hope that whatever we settle on for the budget for next year attracts a rich pool of semifinalists and finalists. When people apply for the president's position, not knowing whether they're gonna be screened in or screened out, they likely are not going to delve into the budget. Uh but once they get to the semifinalist stage, you bet they will, and I my my belief is we collectively owe it to the successor to build a budget that that incoming president can take and run with.
Right.
And continue the trajectory of growth and quality programs and services, and like to me, it's not kicking the can down the road for the board to settle on a budget that will attract the quality candidates that you want, that Butler and our students deserve. Uh and I get, I get the sensitivity to local taxpayers and the sensitivity to our students. It it's a delicate dance, but I think this has been good conversation tonight. I think you have raised some excellent questions, keep them coming. We will get you answers, and then when we come back at the February work session, we will tweak whatever assumption assumptions and whatever else in the budget you want to tweak. But I hope the frame, the overarching frame is working together for the common good of our students in the future of the college. I have a vested interest in seventeen years plus six months.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you for letting me speak.
Okay.
My only thing is I'd reached out to the new union president quite a while ago, uh.
Camille.
It's like, hey, if you guys ever want to talk as an individual trustee that has no power, so anyway, I met with her and Cory this last week. Our bucks, we just talked for like an hour and a half. It was like, it was a nice conversation, so if any of y'all are interested, I'm not a union opponent just from my line of work, I don't have a great love of unions, but I'm all about talking about the college, what can we do best for Butler, and it was a great conversation, so. But she did bring up, uh they had mentioned probably twice, they would like to have a board member on the committee for. No negotiating, so if we as a board would like to put that up for a vote next month and just say what we want to do or not, I would like that on the agenda, just so as a board, we say, so there's no ambiguity.
That is a significant time commitment.
Right.
Because you need to attend all of them, it doesn't, it doesn't work, I mean, I've been through contract negotiations, you can't show up for one and then miss two and expect to come back.
And I've listened to them at the last couple of years, but we still have no input.
What what frustrates me a little bit, I I understand the ask, what frustrates me a little bit is that that is that comes from the preconceived notion that we are being misled by administration. Because that's the only reason why, I mean, and that was, that was Terry's deal, that was his shtick of the Dr. Crowe was not telling you what's going on here, which was absolutely false, and this just feeds into that, but of course, if you want to ask for it to be on.
We could just say that as a board, like, hey, I mean, it was done very poorly the last few years. We don't really appreciate it, I didn't really appreciate it, but at least to say, hey, thanks for the invite, do any of us that time. We'll listen to it, I mean, we're not, we're not anti-teacher. Yeah, I mean.
We will bring you back some data.
That I that I met and talked with everybody, so I just thought I'd make.
Just want to make one comment to Shelby, that as a board member on the negotiations team, you can't really negotiate.
Right, right, you would just sit there.
Yeah, and we do have have had that option, and even um um we've had Dave there that sat in the audience, and and I know Julie came a couple of times to some of our negotiation meetings, more than a couple. But the the fact that you can't make a decision for the board
No.
makes it very hard for you to sit there, and when they they're expecting to negotiate with the board at that point.
Yeah, we couldn't talk either, because there's not.
Right.
If we could explain that, then vote no next month, it's like, this is our reason.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure.
Some big, before, it's like this giant wedge between us, it's like, we're all here for the betterment of Butler.
Of course.
Let's get it done, it's sort of, you know, we all have different ideas, but I think we're all here for the same reason.
And to the credit of both negotiating parties, we settled on a, on a, on a contract early after a long struggle.
Oh, gorgeous. I have three more things, one prompted by Shelby. It is very helpful for us, the administration, to be informed when you have conversations with faculty and staff within the college, so Shelby, thank you for doing that to the rest of the board. If you happen to have a conversation with someone internal to the college, please let me know, that's good practice.
I think it's a good courtesy too, I mean, don't go out on a limb. Let Dr. Vetti know.
On that note, then it sounds like other people got it today, I responded to an email from the editor of The Lantern. It was addressed just to me, so I just thought she emailed me, because I was the board chair, asking to talk about the decision regarding um live streaming the meetings, my response was simply, we haven't made a decision, it's on the agenda for the February meeting. Um I throw that out there, that's, I I don't know that an interview, I don't know that I have any interest in being interviewed about a decision that we haven't made yet. But that's my personal view, just so everybody knows, it's out there, it sounds like other trustees also were were contacted.
Did you respond?
I I just responded saying that the, that the, there hasn't been a decision.
If you responded, then I'm not gonna respond, I mean.
I I responded, say, I'm happy to answer questions, and it'll be like, I'm one trustee, I can't do anything, this is what I think, which is what we're here for, I mean.
I'm I'm not gonna respond to mine, because you responded.
Okay, and I would like to remind the board that best practice is when a decision is made, the board chair.
Absolutely.
The spokesperson, so just remember that as a best practice, but I have two other things. Uh snacks back there, take snacks for the road or eat them here, and you do have an invitation at your places in an envelope for the Butler auction that will be here before we know it, so I hope you can all come.
We'll be there.
Okay, I'm done.
We figured you'd be there.
Yeah, they they wrote me and.
We'll be there.
Okay.
Thank you, thanks, everybody.